10 o'clock and I welcome you all to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners meeting and call the meeting to order, the work session for January the 26th, 2021. I don't see any elected officials in our group this morning. Tommy, if you bring the list forward. And I think I've already turned my phone off. Make sure yours is off. We hope everything's all right with Reverend Burris, but since he's not here yet, I vouch County Commissioner Chuck Hart to lead us into a vacation and pledge, stand if you're able.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we do come before you today, Lord, and we just ask your blessings on this county and bless your blessings on this board, Lord. Just help us today, Lord, as we make these decisions, Lord, just give us the wisdom to make the right decisions, Lord. Lord, we want to come to you, Lord, with this pandemic and the things that are going on around it and all the suffering in the people who have lost loved ones or have had to put up with this sickness, Lord, we just pray that you would just make this new vaccine expedite this process, Lord, and be with those who are suffering from it. Lord, thank you for everything you do for us, be with us throughout the rest of today. In your name we ask it. Amen. Let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thanks so much, Chuck. The minutes of the January 12th, 2021 work session and the board meeting minutes also are available for your review. Under announcements, Team Pauling features today the Paulding County's new Adopt a Stream program that's new for me, so I look forward to seeing this. Let's enjoy it together.
Paulding County has an abundance of creeks and streams. How do we know if these streams are clean? We met with Eric Eberle, Paulding County Water Systems Environmental Specialist and Adopt a Stream Coordinator, to learn about the volunteer water quality monitoring program.
Here we are located in Paulding County. We actually have three major watersheds in Paulding County. The Tallahassee River starts in Paulding County. To the north, you have the Etowah River system that will flow into the Cusa. The southeast region has Chattahoochee. Adopt a Stream is a statewide program. It enables citizen scientists to be able to go out and check the quality of the stream. It could be your backyard stream. It could be something as beautiful as High Shores Falls that we're at today.
The program does more than just monitor the quality of our waterways.
You can also do a stream cleanup, which will be a community event where we can actually get a team of people to come out and help you and we'll all volunteer. We usually get probably a couple of truckloads out of the creeks. We get tires and all kinds of trash and just helps improve the habitat in your local streams.
Eric showed us some of the testing that can be done by citizen scientists to monitor the water quality. Types of monitoring include chemical, bacterial, macroinvertebrate, visual, and amphibian monitoring.
In order to get involved in the Adopt a Stream program, all you have to do is contact your local coordinator. All you have to do is you have to attend a monitoring workshop where you will be trained and you'll actually take a test to be QA QC certified. And once you accomplish that, you'll be entered into the database and you can be able to monitor as often as you like.
We hope that this will encourage citizens to sign up to monitor or approve sections of streams in Paulding County.
I highly recommend joining Paulding County Adopt a Streams program. They'll be able to help you keep tabs on your local creeks and keep the streams in our water system healthy and keep Paulding beautiful.
Thank you for bringing that to us, very informative. We have no invited guests this morning. Under bid awards, item number two is to approve the purchase of a track loader to the lowest bidder L and N Supply in the amount of $67,334. Finance Director Ms. Pollard to report.
Good morning. Tim Atchison has worked with Water System to solicit quotes and we have five and we're recommending award to L and N Supply, which is local. They were the low bid in the amount of $67,334. This will provide a track loader out at the reservoir so that they can move things around and efficiently provide everyday services that they need in their work.
Any questions or concerns? Thanks, Tabitha. Item number three is to approve the purchase of materials to provide installation of the Seven Hills Connector water main in the amount of $464,779.70, located in post four. Ms. Pollard.
So on January 15th, we received bids. These bids were for materials that were to be provided to install water main at Seven Hills Connector. We expect there to be a few more projects in that area, so we put in enough pipe to provide those projects as well, so we could lock the price in. Materials are going out of sight every day, so it locks it in so that we can purchase at this price over the next few months. So this bid award is for, sorry, we had three participants and the bid award's to Corin Main in the amount of $464,779.70. The price that we'll use currently is $239,364, but again, it just locks the price for that additional pipe.
We had good backup material on that, so we appreciate that always. Any questions? And item number four is to award the flow monitoring services for pumpkin vine and copper mine sewer treatment plants to ADS Environmental Services in the amount of $285,334. Post three is the location. Ms. Pollard.
Water system's been very busy this month. So January 8th, they had received a request for proposal. We have some treatment of sewer or sewer treatment is very expensive when you have groundwater that gets in that treatment plant. You have additional costs that really we didn't have to treat, so they want to do a flow monitoring so that we can get that groundwater away from there, away from those plants. And in doing so, we will purchase nine flow monitors, two rain gauges, and we will have 24 months of 24-hour flow monitoring services so that we can develop a plan to get that groundwater away from those treatment plants.
I forget how many bids we had on that. Was it many?
We only had one.
Don't necessarily like that, do we? Any other questions? All right, let's move on to reports from committees and department. First, we're honored and privileged to have Ms. Mary Carol Sheffield here from County Extension Coordinator, and she's going to give us an annual report here.
Good morning. Thank you, guys, for hosting me this morning. I like to come every year and just talk about some of the things that we accomplished. And of course, fiscal year 2020 ended a little different, and this does reflect fiscal year, so it's through June 30th, the numbers that I'm reporting today. But we did manage to accomplish a lot of things last year through our 4H and Master Garden programs and do some great outreach through laboratory and office diagnostics for homeowners in our county. One of the, our 4H program is kind of a gem, really, in the state of Georgia. Paulding County is looked at as one of the leading 4H programs in the state, and 2020 was no exception. We had a lot of great things come out of the year. One of the most impressive things that I think came out of the year was that we had 133 middle schoolers do service learning projects through their middle school clubs. And some of the things that they were able to do included 50 volunteer hours and 195 pounds of pet food donated to Paulding County Animal Control, 16 volunteer hours and 351 pounds of canned and dry goods donated to Helping Hands in Paulding County, and 88 new stuffed animals were donated to the Paulding County Sheriff's Office by one of our middle schools that did a toy drive, so that sheriff's officers would have a stuffed animal for kids in traumatic scenarios where they're approaching. So I thought those were really exceptional things that came out of our 4H program this year. That was kind of a new initiative, and that all happened before we kind of got curtailed in March, so that was great that we were able to accomplish that. In addition to that, our master gardeners continued with their scholarship program. They were not able to host their annual plant sale this year, so they had to get creative. And in the fall, they kind of did a contactless plant sale, and they even were able to manage to get some donations from some local community members that helped support the scholarship so that that is able to continue into the coming years as well, so we're excited about that. We continue to coordinate lots of programs and outreach related to water quality and water conservation, as well as agricultural and environmental awareness. And so we're really grateful for the support that the Board of Commissioners Office has and I just wanted to come and say thank you today, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Did you get your building rehabed?
That has been, yes, our construction finished over at the building on the outside this year, and that has just been a super big blessing, and hopefully the new road brings you by every day. It makes us much more visible and it's bringing us kind of more foot traffic, so that's been exciting, and we're putting in some new gardens, which, you know, we're excited about.
Are you still getting interns on a regular basis?
We, right now, are not, I don't have an intern right now, but there's always the opportunity through UGA and also working with the school board to get some intern activity. We don't currently have an intern. Everything's a little bit more complicated now in terms of people coming in and out of the office. Now, people are allowed in the office, but the university standards and the school district standards make it a little complicated for the time being, but we're always open to that. So, and we have some programming coming up. We're doing our annual Arbor Day Tree giveaway. We usually do it here, but we're actually going to do it as a drive-through contactless event at the office because the construction's done and the circle roundabout's right there. And then we're going to do a vegetable gardener program that will either be a webinar or in person, depending on how things go later in February.
If we have a staff retreat, could you kind of head up a BB gun competition?
I could bring the guy who could head up a BB gun competition or some of the guys who could head up, you know, some skeet shooting or archery, so you keep me posted. We do have three shooting sports teams. All are currently active recruiting and practicing, and we're hoping for some competition. We did have a virtual archery competition over the weekend.
Virtual?
Yeah. They did their part in person and reported their numbers virtually, so they could compete with other counties without all coming to one place. I know that sounds crazy, but we're working it out. They were great.
Thank you, Mary Carol.
Thanks, y'all.
We're glad to have our financial report this morning, so next item under reports is Ms. Tabitha Pollard, Finance Director for our mid-year review, very important review.
Good morning. I'm doing this a little differently. It's easier to see some of the documents in PDF than it would be in presentation, so we're going to attempt this. It seems like we just ended the year and now it's, and when we adopted that budget, we talked about mid-year review at that time. Now we're here and we're getting ready to plan for the 2022 year, so time's flying pretty fast. So today I'm going to talk about June 30 numbers and I'm going to talk about December 31st numbers and then give you an idea of what we're looking at, hopefully, for the 2022 year. This is a link to the CAFR, so if you go out to pauling.gov under departments, Finance Department, you can see the most recent financial statement. It's a comprehensive annual financial report and it'll give you all the information for 2020, so it gives you every fund more information than you could possibly want. Most of the time when we go through this, we're interested in general fund because everybody's looking at property taxes, you're looking at the services that you provide, and for the most part, those are provided through the general fund. So this is a couple of pages taken from the 2020 CAFR, and so our revenues, the actual was 72 million and we had budgeted 67 million in taxes. That's not property taxes, those are a combination of quite a few different taxes. So you've got your title levelorum tax that's played on vehicles, you've got sales tax, and we're going to talk about that, those two, in just a moment. But one of the things that's in there, about $1.2 million, there was a transaction that went to the state for sales tax and the state received credit for it and they came back and amended it in August, but because it was collected in 2020, it's included in this. So basically, we got one extra month of sales tax last year. We had insurance premium tax. Pretty much, we were on budget or just above budget for everything except for the title levelorum and the sales tax. The intergovernmental, those are grant funds. Those are, we don't budget those, all of those going into the year, and we do, once they're awarded, then we amend the budget for those funds. Three, about 3 million of that is DOT, so you've got 2 million for your LMEG and a million for the infrastructure traffic control project. About 600,000 is for crimes and judicial. Everything else was pretty much in line. The miscellaneous includes some rental income, that's your cell towers, some of the building facilities that you have rented, that's what that comes from. Then you get down to the departments. So when you look at the departments, you have an original budget, then you have a final budget. We didn't do a lot of amendments this year, and then you have an actual and then you have a variance. For the most, well, all of these are positive, so your departments came in under budget from the final budget. Scrolling all the way down to the bottom, that, well, to the total expenditures line, right here, you had 71.9 million dollars was your actual expense and that came in under budget, under your 78.2 million dollar budget. This was a transfer out, the 200,000 was transferred to landfill, 899,000 was transferred to the water system for the sewer improvements. So in a nutshell, how did we end the year? Your change to fund balance was an increase in the amount of 13.8 million dollars. That was a combination of revenues exceeding budget and your departments, your expenses came in under budget, so the two of those combined added to your fund balance. Now, we have, every year, we have encumbrances, so those are obligations that are made by the end of the year that are not spent. There was about 8 million dollars that rolled from 2020 to 2021. That's important in the next, in a few minutes, but that would have brought this number down just a little bit had incurred those expenses. Yes, sir?
Before you go to the next page, back at the top under the revenues miscellaneous.
Uh huh.
It's not any huge amount as far as these numbers go, but it's, the actual was twice what the final was, from 249,498, 671.
Yeah.
What changed?
Those, most of those are from rental income and from cell towers and maybe the amendment, I mean, the cell tower lease was extended or what, if you'll remember, over the course of last year, we did a couple of them where to extend those leases, they had a one-time pay, and so those would have been 15,000 dollars or at one time, and they're also included in there.
Mr. Chair, if I can add, I believe Tabitha, if I'm correct on that, we actually engaged a consultant through GMA for the cell tower renewals, and they assisted in tightening these things up a little bit and bringing in some of these additional revenues.
Yes, and it's not that that could be counted on each and every year, because again, some of those were one-time pays.
Thank you.
Okay, title levelorum tax, this, let me make it a little smaller, so you can see the, all of the chart here. So I guess as long as interest rate remains low, people are going to continue to trade cars, that kind of thing, and that number will stay high. Again, it's economic driven, so if things change, then this is kind of probably your most vulnerable revenue. But in 2020, the red lines are 2020, so it was, it was, it had increased quite a bit. Part of that increase is the change in the state law, so there wasn't a true-up, which true-up, the, it was split between bond and fire tax, and true-up made us make those whole. That went away in 2020, and so all of the title levelorum tax now is deposited here, so it's not, it's in general fund revenue. So this is new revenue, but it's not completely new revenue, it's just increased amount for general fund. And your 2021 seems to be keeping up with 2020 and exceeding in every month but one. Decembers, I don't have yet, but October remained about the same, and we've been exceeding in every other month so far this year. So again, as long as interest rates remain low, I think that will continue. Sales tax, local option sales tax. So we're seeing revenues of about 200,000 more a month over previous, over the previous period. So the blue 2021 is significantly higher. In April of 2020, we began to see sales tax received for online purchases. So when COVID hit, people stopped going to the store. It was fortunate for Paulding that we were able to tax online purchases because immediately we started reaping the benefit of that. So now our citizens, if they're at home and not going to the store, we're seeing more and more of those sales tax. So that's continued to increase from April, May and June, and then we are continuing to see that increase. And who knows, with Costco opening in March 11th, I have big hopes that that number's just going to continue to increase significantly. Any questions about this? Okay, current year, December numbers. So what have we seen so far? Again, general fund's going to be the focus here. Let me see if I can make that a little bigger. Okay, in the month-to-month, we separate property tax from other taxes. Your property taxes are at about 95%. That's about normal for this time of year, and I don't have all of December's numbers in here, so the tax commissioner actually collects those and then he'll send those to us and that number will continue to climb. Normally, each year, we get to about 99 point something, and then we collect shortly after. We get to almost 100% every year. Other taxes, we've still got some taxes to collect, but as we talked about, the title levelorum and the sales tax, those are increased. Again, we've seen, we've seen numbers exceed the budget so far. Most everything else stays around the same. We do have some intergovernmental funds, intergovernmental revenues, those, there are some cares fund revenues. Not all of that revenue is going to be general fund. I will have to move some of that revenue to match the expenses for other funds, but it's not a lot, so it, let's see. Okay, and then basically, we're at 50% of the year, so the rest of the report has all of the budgets, all of the expenses for each department, your original budget and your final budget. The only difference is if you talk about, remember, we mentioned that 8 million dollars that was left over from last year that was obligated and not spent? Well, that difference is added to your final budget, so you take your original, add that amount to your final, and that's the budget that we're calculating, that we're working with. And then your actual, your next column is your year-to-date for a year ago, so it's December, and then the next column compares where, the percentage as to where you are. Everybody should be at 50. Primarily, your personnel services is over 50. It should be at about 58 or 59% because you have two things that weren't budgeted there. They were budgeted in a non-departmental line. One was the leave buyback that was paid in October, and the other was the 4% amount that was paid out to employees, and so those are included in salaries but not included in the budget. So that makes you look over budget just a little bit here. Overall, if you go to the last page of the general fund, so I think it's page six, and I have handouts as well in the back if anybody would like. Currently, your expenditures this year are at 37 million. Your expenditures this time last year were at 35.6 million, and your year-to-date percentage amount is at 41, so we've spent 41% of the budget so far this year. And then also included in this are the fire, fire, water, landfill, and debt service. And one of the things to mention for debt service is your payments are made in August and there's, it's mostly an interest payment made in August and February 1st, so we just made those, so they're not showing up on here yet. They'll show up on the next one. So do y'all have any questions?
No questions, very good, thank you. No one who's signed up to participate on public participation agenda items. The Senate Agenda Items self, item number five is to adopt an elections job classification for a full-time elections clerk. Item number six is adopt resolution 21-01, approving the waiver of certain penalties and interest by the Paulding County Tax Commissioner. Seven, authorize the chairman to sign a quitclaim deed to transfer the right-of-way currently owned by Paulding County Board of Commissioners and any associated drainage easements for the Justice Center Drive project to the city of Dallas. Number eight is to point John Number eight is to appoint John Grant to serve on the recreation board as a representative for post two. The board is a five-year term beginning January 1st, 2021 and expiring on December 31st, 2025. And number nine is to reappoint Michael Creighton to the Water Sewer Advisory Board as the post two representative with a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2021 and expiring December 31st, 2021. I would ask if any of the commissioners would like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business. Hearing no request, we'll leave them in the consent agenda and move on to old business where we have no old business, new business. Item number 10 is to discuss action to approve the option to extend the existing contract services agreement for the Paulding County Kiosk Program for one year. County Administrator Frank Baker to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to give a little bit of information, not only to the board, but to the public about this program. This request is for a renewal of a one-year period from an existing contract. Just to tell everybody a little bit about the kiosk system. Everybody, if you drive around in Paulding County, you come to an intersection, you'll see possibly a sign. And it's got the logo of the county on top of it, and then it has blades underneath it. And these are directional, these are informational for citizens that are driving past. This program's been going on since 2011, so it's been here a while. It is an important program because it does help keep litter down in our county. If you don't have this type of program, then what you end up with is, you end up with something that, you, you could refer to it as litter on a stick. You could end up every weekend with a bunch of directional signs to different locations. And, and it's all in the right-of-way, and it does create a mess. Sometimes those signs don't get picked up, and then you end up with a, with a, a bunch of litter on the, on the county right-of-way. What is interesting about this is this renewal, as we've had it in the past, is really not something that we're having to fund. Self-funding with a third-party vendor. And what's great about that is we don't have to add a position. We have very little administrative onsite to, or oversight with this program. And it's just dealing with some back-and-forth communication with the third-party vendor that we've been having do this program for us. And in fact, we actually receive some revenue from, from the program. So it's, it's a win-win for us. We don't have to have an investment. It's taken care of by the, the vendor himself. And then we reap, reap the benefits of being able to get some of that money back. So anyway, that's where it is. We don't have any cost of employees, we don't have any cost of supplies or any other equipment. And the bottom line is it does help with keeping litter off of the right-of-way. So that's, in a nutshell, what it is. And the request would be to renew the contract for a one-year extension.
Any questions, Mr. Baker? Thank you very much. New business 11 is discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increasing the amount of $30,000 for the completion of the Costco Drive Project, project number PRIMP 034-1. Project is located in post one, and Mr. Jones to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This was one of the Costco infrastructure projects that were approved through a development agreement between the Paulding County Board of Commissioners and Costco Wholesale at the October 22nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting in the amount of $510,000. This particular project was awarded to CNS Paving for construction on October 13th, 2020. The project consists of a third lane on the access road between Old Griffin Road and the Costco Wholesale Store on the backside of Dallas Dodge and Gerber Collision and Glass. Additional quantities were needed to complete this project. Certain items such as some GAB and asphalt, they had insufficient planned quantities. In addition, we decided to extend the project, include the right-turn deceleration lane on Old Griffin Road for, I think, a better project appearance. The supplementary amount needed is approximately $30,000, which is 19,000, or sorry, 19% of the total contract. Funding for this request will be, will come again through the funds that were allotted towards the Costco infrastructure projects. With this allotment request, our total budget for all the projects that were funded through this development agreement comes to 496,588, which is still under the 510,000 threshold that was allotted originally. And like I said, we're requesting approval for this allotment request.
Any questions? Thank you very much, George.
Thank you.
New business, item 12 is discuss action to approve change order number nine for CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Redson Creek Reservoir Water Treatment Plant, Edewell River Pump Station and Reservoir Pump Station to extend PC Construction's contract final completion date to March 31st, 2021. Obviously located in post four, Ms. Ashmore to report.
Thank you. I'd also like to just say thank you. We really, we're all very proud of Eric Everly and the work that he's doing with Adopt a Stream. And to, to see that showcased this morning was excellent. Eric was actually recognized by the state last year as the, a new Adopt a Stream trainer for the year of 2020. And so we're very proud of him. With, with the, this change order for the C Mar Services, as we've talked about, we've had a couple of delays in the startup of the water treatment plant with some equipment that needed some modification, factory modification to get things running. And that, those pumps are now started up. And this week, we're starting up the DAFT. This amendment, this contract change order, extends the time that PC will support the water system staff through the end of March, originally projected to be the end of December. This is a time extension only. The contract value remains unchanged.
Questions of Ms. Ashmore? Thank you very much, Lori. New business, item 13 is discuss action to approve the chairman to enter into an agreement with Kelly Landscapes Management Incorporated for the roadside right-of-way turf maintenance services contract in the amount of 168,597.65. The contract provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging, and litter pickup of approximately 66 acres. That's 10.5 acres of median and 53.43 acres of roadside shoulders on various county roads. Mr. Jones?
Again, this is for the second renewal of a contract that we currently had with Kelly Landscape Management that was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners at the March 26, 2019 Board Meeting. The contract again provides for right-of-way turf maintenance services on medians and grass shoulders in the county. We've installed sod on various roadway projects through the years, and we desire to keep the sod weed-free, healthy and viable. So basically protect our investment. Again, the contract provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging, litter pickup on roughly 66 miles of grass turf roadside shoulders. Also includes three cycles of fertilizer and herbicide. And again, the cost of these services is estimated to be 168,597.65 throughout the season. The work is scheduled to begin, if approved, in mid-March and goes through November 1st. Every two weeks, total of 17 cycles. You know, Kelly has performed these turf maintenance services for the county for the past, I believe, four years. I think this will be the, the fifth year, if approved. They provided good services. We feel it's been a good service. They provided a good partnership with them. And we would recommend approving going forward with this contract.
Is there competition on that bid?
This is the, basically our last year that we can renew, you know, provided both parties are in agreement. We went for a three-year term where it was one year set and then up to two more years for an option to renew. So this will be the last year that we can actually renew. Next year, we will have to go out and rebid these services. I think the price is, is fair, you know, honestly.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
And number 14 is discuss action to approve a development agreement with North Paulding Development LLC for construction of a water main along a portion of Seven Hills Connector, located, located in post four. Ms. Ashmore?
Thank you. North Paulding Development is developing an 18.36 acre tract along the Seven Hills Connector in the vicinity of Cedar Crest Road. It's the property zone B1 PRD. And the developer would typically just be extending an eight-inch water main to serve the property. But our long-term plans call for that water line to be a 16-inch water line. We have before you a development agreement for the developer to do the installation. We supply materials. This is, as Ms. Pollard mentioned earlier, this is one of the other development agreements that we had anticipated when we went out to bid on the, on that pipe. We are, under the agreement, we would, as I mentioned, we would provide materials. Developer would be responsible for installation. And we would have the money in escrow by both the county and developer for their share of costs. There is an expiration on this development agreement. It expires either on completion of construction and acceptance of the water main or at 24 months. Any questions?
Thank you very much. And that is the conclusion of our regular business. Let's ask the county administrator if there's any other business that might have come up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would suggest the board consider executive session for two issues, real estate and personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for purposes of real estate and personnel.
We have a motion as stated by Commissioner Kaker. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner. So we have a motion and a, a second. And all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? There's, before we go into executive session or get a motion to adjourn, are there any commissioners that would have any announcements or comments this morning at the work session?
I do.
Okay.
I, I would like to thank everybody for being here and looking at using local businesses. We've got two on here today, and I appreciate that. I think we need to use local a little bit more than we do.
I have something also, Dave.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to just make a comment. I've been riding around the county a good bit, like always anyway. But I've been paying more attention to, to the litter on the side of the road. And it's, it does look bad. I mean, I've had constituents call, I've noticed it. I did see Yellowstone picking up 278 yesterday. It was looking horrible. So, you know, the citizens is out there, you know. Doesn't matter if you've lived here your whole life or you're just living here for the last month or so. Just, you know, be proud of Paulding County because I am. And I just, you know, think twice before you, you know, throw something out the window. And if you do see something, you know, if you can get a tag, would, maybe would help the marshal's office. Like I said, it's just, it's rampant out there, it seems like, so thanks.
Thank you. I would just like to announce that on this Friday, the headquarters of Greystone will officially be moved into. And there's going to be a tour led by their president, Gary Miller. And so a couple of commissioners will go along with some of the staff. But they serve 45,000 different businesses, churches, residences in, in Paulding County. And we're delighted that they've come through the whole process to relocate there out of Lithia Springs. They've also participated, partnered with our sewer infrastructure extension financially. So that's helpful to us. I just wanted to make that announcement. No one else has anything? Entertained a motion that we go into executive session for personnel and real estate. It's already passed? Okay, we stand adjourned. At this time, I will call the work session for the 26th of January back to order. And we'll answer our county attorney, Jason Phillips, to announce the Board of Commissioners' direction regarding commencement of negotiations with the city of Dallas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to report that the board has directed me to initiate drafting the necessary documents for the potential transfer of the old Paulding County Courthouse to the city, city of Dallas for the purposes of the city moving its city hall into the old courthouse. I'm going to begin exploring that and working up documentation for your consideration and approval at a later date. And I'll be, put that on the top end of my agenda to get things done.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. There are no other comments or entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Stover, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? CARES 5-0.